Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's October 4th. It's the Penfield School Board meeting, and we'll call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. And we'll join the pledge with Kathryn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
Second.
Motion by Kathryn, second by Kristen. All those in favor, all in favor and none opposed. Thank you. We have a please, have a motion and a second that the board approved tonight's consent agenda as listed in your packet.
Second.
All those in favor, all in favor and none opposed. That was Mark and Emily. And then we have no treasures report, so that brings us to special reports.
Great. So we have two special reports tonight. The first is from some student athletes and Mrs. Walker, our Director for Athletics, PE and Health. And before I get there, I'll also mention that our second report is Tom Zuber here for an audit report. And Mr. Zuber might be a little late, so if he's not here, by the time our students wrap up, I'll ask the board kindly if when he does get here, we can circle back and help him with his time. He's coming from another board meeting, I believe. And so if we can have Mrs. Walker and our students come up, I believe we have some seats or Mrs. Walker, we just want the students to come up. You guys can come on up, don't be shy. And I'll read this slide. So Penfield Promise, we've talked about and you might have seen on social media, it's on our webpage, and then a number of media stations sort of spread the word as well. And so in lieu of admissions this year, food and toiletry items are being collected at every home varsity game throughout the entire school year to benefit the residents of EL Tower. And Penfield athletes will be sorting and delivering the items. The first delivery was made last Thursday, the 29th, and so it's a thank you to our athletes and some being represented here and the Penfield community for supporting this initiative. And so I'm going to turn it over because this was just going to be like a slide in my happy update, and we've got two wonderful varsity football players. If you guys can come on up, we'll get you chairs. And it really is great for me as an adult to talk about it, but I really wanted an opportunity and thanks to our Board President, Ms. Chidzie, around having students to share your experience. So nothing's been rehearsed here, but I'm going to turn it over, and all I'm asking is that you can start with just your first name, your grade you're in, and the sport you're here representing, and talk a little bit about the Penfield Promise, what it means to you and the process you went through, anything at all.
I'm Alex Young, a senior here at Penfield, and I play football.
I'm Lydia Hickey. I'm a junior, and I am on the golf team.
I'm Sarah Tadio. I'm a junior, and I'm on the golf team.
Ryan Parton, I'm a senior. I'm representing boys cross-country.
I'm Hadley Warren. I'm a senior, and I'm representing girls cross-country.
I'm Abby Trahan. I'm a sophomore, and I'm here for girls cross-country.
I'm Adam Schambry. I'm a junior, and I play football.
What about you, Ms. Walker?
I'm a walker athletic director.
Representing all sports?
Yeah.
So I was there and got to witness sort of the work that day of, you know, putting things together, but can you, from the terms of athletes, talk just a little bit about the collection process, what you're seeing, how that day went to prepare? And I believe everybody here was able to get down and do the delivery to EL Tower. Just a little bit about what that, how that felt and sort of what you hope for it.
Basically, when, the coolest part to me was when everybody was in the gym putting together all of the care packages, and I really got to see all the different sports coming together to support the community and like see how everyone coming together and we can make a difference for all those people at the EL Tower. And it was really nice to see just like the joy on all their faces when we got, when we got there. And yeah, it was a very emotional day, and it was, it was really nice to see that we were making a difference in the community.
So all throughout the week, we, I've seen students, not just athletes, donating supplies for the EL Towers. And last Thursday, I believe it was the 29th, it was? Everyone came together for students, these are athletes, and we all packaged up prepared gifts, gift packages, wrote cards for everyone, and packed it all in the truck, delivered there. And it's really, really fun to see. So many people in tears and thanking the Lord that, for all the gifts that we've prepared for them.
My favorite part of doing this was when we first like pulled around the corner to get to the EL Tower, just seeing everyone's faces. There were people waiting outside for us. They were all just so excited. People, some people were crying, and it just, it felt really good. One of the residents said, "You guys don't know how much this means to us," and I really didn't until I got there and saw their reactions, and it just felt really nice.
It's really empowering seeing how much of an impact we can make in its, with such small things from just the community, and it really shows how privileged we are to be student athletes at Penfield and the situation we're in and how we can make a difference with so little effort. It's something that we should definitely complete and continue to do.
I think it's an important piece for not only me as an athlete, but everybody else that's an athlete and our entire community as a whole, to kind of recognize that we're people before we were athletes. And it's a big empathy piece in the sense of everybody is deserving of help sometimes, whether they want to ask for it or not. And specifically when we brought the food and hygiene items to the EL Tower, it was kind of a touching moment, not just for me, but I think for everybody that was there, because it kind of shows how just even a few of us or a group of us can make such a big difference for such a big group of people, and that's really important for us as a community.
Yeah, going off of what Adam said, I mean, it was so easy. We just, every time you went to like a sporting event, you just brought a canned good or a box of macaroni or something, and it was so easy, and then to see the smile on their faces when they were done and when you were bringing all the boxes in, it was, no other experience was like that.
It's really easy to forget, like, like it's really easy to just like focus on your sport or like the thing that you love to do. So it was really interesting to like focus on like helping other people, like not that we don't do that, but we should do it more often, so it was really interesting to like dedicate time to that.
I see Dr. Maloney really wants to say something over there.
They know. So for the board and for the community watching, can someone explain what Primetime 585 is so that it helps describe and give context to how the partnership came to be?
You can definitely turn to Mrs. Walker for that one.
They know what it is.
It's a big, so where I got, it's a husband and wife that came out on a social media platform, and they're going around to everybody, every sporting event, trying to make it, just publicize it and everything, and just do great things all around. And it's not really to benefit them or anybody else, it's just to get the kids out there and reward them for the great things that they've done.
Because it's just high, high school sports, right?
And they have a huge following online, and it's not just even the Monroe County area. I've seen them report on schools in Genesee County, Livingston County. And then the other question that I wanted to ask was about Birdhouse. So were you able to get even the Birdhouse behind bringing in canned goods and toiletries and supplies?
Yeah, we, so we posted on Birdhouse like the stories with the, like the themes and stuff, and under all that, we'd label, we'd specialize an item to bring. We'd say bring a canned good for this sporting event, and everybody would bring a canned good and place it in the bin right before they walked in, and that's how we mostly got everything that they really needed.
So again, for those folks at home and for the board, the Birdhouse is our student section, and it's probably been 10 years that the student section has been run by, through social media, by an actual student or a group of students. And the power that they have collectively together to really be able to come out and support teams and homecoming, I, it's just, it's, it's incredible, the number of students that really rally around and support. So this is, this is awesome.
Sorry.
No, that was, that was great. Is there anything else you guys wanted to add?
I just wanted to answer your question about the partnership, and just so everyone's aware, the, the idea initiated from actually the global boosters that wanted to do some team building with all of our athletes instead of just having separate teams. And then when I started kind of researching team building, you know, we formed a little committee, and the thought came about having our kids be powerful messengers and doing something in the committee as part of that team building to give back instead of just, you know, going on a hayride or doing something like that for them to see the power they have. And so when we thought about how we're going to do it, my first thought came to Primetime 585, who has such a connection with community organizations, and I knew that she would know somebody that we can partner with in need to fulfill our goals. And quite honestly, I can't be proud, you know, more proud of the athletes and the families and the communities and even the opponents who have showed up with bags of items when they've come to compete against us, just how powerful and how much they're committed to this. And I think taking them to the tower was the actual piece that they needed to see as to see the people that are actually receiving the items so they can truly understand what they're doing. So for me, that was the powerful piece, watching our kids and the residents interact and have those conversations and connections.
I appreciate you mentioning global boosters and then, you know, primetime and our athletes and district support in the sense of it is really always everybody coming together for common, common good. I think I can just tell you that for me, one of the pieces with EL Tower, as I learned more about it, is the number of veterans who live there who are in need. And you know, as a son of a veteran, many times our veterans are sort of not supported, my own personal opinion, as, as our nation should. And so just, you know, seeing, you know, our students come and take care and support, I think is, is really amazing. So, thank you.
One last point. The impact that they've had is other districts are now trying to replicate what we're doing and jump on and adopt other organizations or other towers, because I think we've shown the power of what can be done, so.
I appreciate that. I, board, I don't know if they have, if you have questions for our athletes or Mrs. Walker or anything?
I just have a comment. I am really, really glad this has happened in our community and to expose our students, our kiddos, to the privilege that they have, and it takes this much effort to help someone else, this much. A smile, a kind word, a can of, you know, food. It's really important. It's also good to get out of our little bubble in our community and see who else is out there, who is in need, and what you can do. You never know your true power until you help someone else. And this, I hope, is not your first introduction to mutual aid. Okay? And, you know, apart from primetime, 585, am I saying that correctly? And also, I know the school district fully supports the food shelf here in our community, and there are so many other organizations where you can just reach out on your own and help. So keep up the good work, know and understand your power, and always, always do mutual aid. Okay? Well done, folks. Well done.
Kathryn, you have a question?
Yeah, I had a comment. I wanted to, I wanted to point out, you had said, "It was easy." You know, "We all just brought something. It was easy." But then there was this big coordinated effort, and you can see in the pictures, all the people who came together to do the work and to get it over to the tower, to EL Tower. And then you saw what all of your efforts meant to other people. Making those connections between something that's easy wasn't that easy, really. It's just that when so many people are working together, it makes for lighter work. But the impact was huge. I think you all got something from what you're telling us. You got a lot out of it. You helped other people, and that's really sorely lacking, and I'm so impressed, and I'm really proud of all of you and everybody else who participated.
So I will just say thank you again on behalf of the board and the district and our-
Well, I didn't get to say anything.
I waited.
You didn't wait long enough, Tom.
Well, I was wanting to make sure they were done.
Count to five.
Okay, right, let me count to five. Yeah, I know. I'm slow sometimes.
Go ahead.
I love when students come because you're such a shining example of this district. So thank you for being here. Thank you for everything that you did. It's just so, look, I'm going to get emotional about it. It's so powerful, and to hear you speak about it just authentically is just, it's so lovely. So on behalf of all of us, thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth, and to the parents that supported this. And look at the impact. It's so exciting. And now I know what 585. Wait, say it again.
Primetime 585.
Primetime 585, because I figured it out, actually, in the last couple of weeks. I was like, "What is going on?" So, yeah, big, big shout out to all of you. Go ahead now. Wait, should I count to five?
No, it's good. I just want to say thank you again on behalf of the district. I think the one piece too is for people watching at home. I think the board's aware and the district, but like this isn't a one and done. So this goes all year long, and so other sports, as they pick up for winter and spring sports, this is an ongoing effort in a part, long-term partnership with EL Tower. So like just as Ms. Can said around, you know, mutual aid is wonderful and support and help people out every chance you get, whether it's with food or monetary or even that smile and kind word, because we all need them every day. It's also nice to know that it's not just one. So I know they're, they've built a food shelf there, a cupboard, they're bringing stuff down, and I know I heard from some other students around the residents not realizing that either. So hearing that like, "Oh, no, this, this, this is going to continue," was really powerful. And so just want to say too is that as we enter this next month, oh, sorry, we're in October. October falls into what we refer to as Make a Difference Day, and the district's partnered with our local Penfield Food Shelf to, through all of our clubs and organizations, because our athletes are a powerhouse, but so are our schools and our elementary students and our middle school and high school students who may not participate in athletics or athletics and clubs. And so there is much need to give and keep doing great work, and thank you so much for being here. So, thank you. You do not need to stay for the rest of the board meeting. Tom Zuber, the auditor, just walked in. Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Make sure you get a cookie.
Make sure you get a cookie on your way out. And again, thank you guys very, very much. Go Penfield. Make a little light for you so I know when you're, when it's my turn.
Well, because I was sleeping.
Sorry.
So impressive.
All right, so we actually can shift right to our second special report with Mr. Zuber and audit report. So thank you, Mr. Zuber. Come on up. We got nine seats for you to pick from.
We don't get this type of welcome.
You can also have a cookie on your way out.
Thank you.
Thanks for being, and just for the community and the board, typically Dr. Driffl's here, our business official. He is out today ill, and Mrs. Potter, our Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access, is also out. And so we're here for you, Tom, and, and I know you look at Dan as the business guy when you present, but I'm happy to smile at you as well.
Well, we, we take all the smiles we can get sometimes, so. Well, good evening. Am I good to go?
You're good.
Well, great. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight, you know, and here to just talk a little bit about the basic financial statements of the school district. As you know, this is part of an annual process we go through, and you know, I'm pleased to report we did meet with the audit committee back on September 29th, so last week. We, we had a nice discussion with the audit committee. We, we talked about year-over-year variances, we talked about fund balances, we talked about reserve accounts, we talked about internal controls and checks and balances. So we had a very nice discussion with the audit committee, and like all school districts in New York State, there are always still challenges that school districts face. Specifically, you know, labor shortage seems to be a fairly significant challenge that everybody's facing right now. You've got challenges with inflation and how to deal with some of those, those areas. You've got challenges with state aid, state aid uncertainty, employee benefits, and even the federal stimulus funds that you, you've received. You know, the challenges with the spending of those dollars and managing those dollars, because as you know, with those stimulus fundings, when they're gone, right, there's no other revenue to replace those. So managing those stimulus funds are very important, and the district really has done a very nice job of that. And when we look at the challenges out there, the district really has positioned themselves to face those challenges very nicely. And when we look at that, we really look at that with the reserve accounts and how the district manages your long-term planning. And again, this district does an excellent job in that. You've got a nice reserve plan that talks about all of the different reserves that the school district has and, and the purpose of each reserve. You've got, you have discussions during your budget process, okay, as part of, with the utilization of the reserves. So you're really doing a very nice job with that. You know, you do have several different reserves. As you know, this year, the district utilized some of the more beneficial reserves out there, the capital reserves, right? And as you recall, you, the voters approved a fairly significant capital project, and you're over, you were able to pull about $20 million out of your capital reserves, right? And again, those reserves, the voters create those reserves, the board funds them, and then the voters utilize those reserves. And they're very beneficial because it really does reduce the local impact to the taxpayer, okay? Because you're, you're using these reserves and as part of a long-term plan. So you've done a very nice job of that. The district has really paid attention to those types of reserves over the years, and you've really done an excellent job there. A couple of the other more beneficial reserves out there, they're all very beneficial, but you know, there's some other significant reserves that, you know, are out there really to help with things like retirement costs relating to the New York State Teachers Retirement System. As you know, you know, you folks, you participate in the system, and the state says, "Here's what your rate is, and you have to pay it." And that's why the plan is, is very nicely funded. But you have these reserves, the retirement contribution, the teachers' retirement contribution reserve, to really help offset any of those spikes in those rates, right? Because as you know, if there's a 1% increase in the rate and you apply that to your teacher's salary, it's a much larger impact on your budget than 1%, okay? That's important because that has to be absorbed in your operating budget when it comes to the tax cap calculation. You can't, there's no exclusion for significant rate increases. So again, they're, they're above, below 2%. Anything above 2% there is, but that those dollar amounts below 2% of a rate increase have to be absorbed in your operating budget. And as you know, the rates continue to go up. They went up from last year to this year about a half a point, and they went up from 9.8% to almost 10.25% this year. So, you know, there continues to be a trend that they, they go up slightly each year. So again, you've got these reserves that are there to help with the long-term planning. Again, very, very beneficial as it relates to that long-term plan. A couple of the other items that we talked a little bit about, again, with the stimulus funding, again, part of the plan for the school district is utilize those stimulus fundings for a lot of new, new type programs, eligible costs. So you did spend a little over three point, little over $3 million in the stimulus funding, or $1.5 million in stimulus funding last year, okay? And again, part of those dollars were used towards some of the capital-related items that's part of your long-term plan. But again, with those stimulus fundings, again, the key with that is that they're, they're really short-term funding, one-time funding, funded from the federal government. So you really want to make sure you're managing those. The district has a nice plan in place, and you're really doing a very good job of that. So again, overall, you ended the year in a very good financial position, okay? You're utilizing some of the reserves as part of your long-term planning, and you were able to refund some of those reserves last year. I think you were able to reallocate about $4.5 million back into reserves, okay? So in addition to that, you were able to allocate some additional dollars over to the capital projects. So in total, you're able to support this, the newly created, the newly approved capital project with about $31 million between general fund allocations and the reserve account. So again, very, very good long-term plan when it relates to the school district and the capital, capital project piece, okay? So that, you know, is the, really the basic financial statements. Those are some of the items that we talked about with the audit committee. We also issued an internal control communication and management letter, okay? And again, as we go through the audit process, we sit down with your, your staff in your business office and really talk about the different processes and procedures, the checks and balances that you have over the major financial cycles. So, so the checks and balances over the payroll processes and procedures, the procurement process and procedures. And I'm pleased to report there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So that's very, very positive. We had really one or two procedural items, one relating to the school lunch program, very minor procedural recommendation, and one relating to just enhancing some of the documentation surrounding the federal program. So again, very minor procedural items, but you know, again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So again, very positive in the financial statement standpoint. Okay? Any questions on, on any of those items?
Board members, questions? I know there was some information in your packet as well from the audit committee. Yeah, that was good. All right.
All right.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Don't forget your cookie.
Yeah.
And that concludes special reports.
Wow. Maybe there'll be cookies left. All right, that brings us to Lila, student rep report. Hello?
Hi, good evening. So just to start off with, about two weeks ago, we had our homecoming, which included different dress-up days for all our schools. Highlights included Neon Day, Western Day, and of course, our class colors. And we had the football game as well with the family fun zone before, which had face painting, games, and different food trucks. That was a lot of fun. At the high school, we had our pep rally that day, which featured, you know, classic games of tug, of tug-of-war between the classes and the steeplechase. So that was a lot of fun for all of us. So at the high school, we've also had our very first senior sunrise, which featured a special news segment that highlighted different clubs and sports here at PHS. And we've also had many of our clubs having their first meetings, including craft club, science olympiad, and book club. College visits are also in full swing here and have included Dartmouth, Syracuse, U-Miami, and Boston University. We have also had lots of different sports activities going on with girls tennis having their sectionals this evening, and girls varsity soccer playing Webster-Schrader tonight at home. At Bay Trail, best buddies started yesterday, and new clubs have formed, including Pinterest Club and Chess Club. At Scribner, Mr. Herschler visited a first-grade class to read one of his favorite books. At Indian Landing, Mrs. Kaiser's class went on a field trip to a local park to learn all about ecosystems. At Cobble's, instrumental lessons have begun again. And at Harris Hill, kindergartners have began playing get-to-know-you games and learning all about Harris Hill, and have also gone on nature hikes during PE classes. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, questions for Lila? No? I might want to have a Pinterest club. What do you get to do in Pinterest club?
Um, so I don't know too much about it, but one of my friends is on the dance team this year, and so they performed at different basketball, volleyball games and football games. That's been really cool to see, but they do have some eighth graders on the team as well. So she talked about how a lot of them have joined Pinterest Club, and I think it's a place where they can do different crafts and come up with ideas and just, you know, have fun all together, so.
That sounds fun.
I have a question. You mentioned college visits. So is that school-sponsored college visits, and how do you choose the colleges?
So what happens is they have the admissions representative come in, and it's usually one of them, they come into the counseling office, and you can just sign up, and if you're interested in the school, you can go and talk to the admissions officer, and they give you a little bit of- they give you a little bit of information about the school, talk to you about different programs, and are there to answer any of the questions you might have.
And those ones that you mentioned, do they, do they reach out to you? Do we want to come, or does the school reach out to them?
I'm pretty sure it's a mix of both. Yeah.
So it's both. So the counseling staff will have connections to reach out, and then colleges will reach out to us as well to say, we've got someone on the road, you know, can we stop over? And that's something that starts now and goes for most of the, most of this year in terms of those rolling college conversations.
Great. Thank you. Now we're back to you, Superintendent Reports. That was fast.
That's great. So I just have a few updates. Oh, hang on. I got it, Steve. Let me try. All right, there we go. So I've got the New York State School Music Association, Area Allstate. So just again, kudos to our music teachers, our music community, and our incredible students. And I always have to stop and say, not necessarily talent, because talent is part of it, but it's really hard work and dedication to get to this level. So all of these names are on the agenda. Encourage folks to take a look, and congratulations to our Area Allstate NISMAs students. We do also have two National Merit Scholars, Isabel Roth and Berkeley Pollak. Congratulations. They're seniors here at the high school, and they were named semifinalists in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Competition. And I love when we take a look at these and we talk about that. Right now, they're among 16,000 semifinalists selected from over 1.5 million juniors who took the qualifying exam last year, and they'll now move on to compete for one of 7,500 National Merit Scholarships. So really, again, talent, but also hard work and dedication and support. So we did hear a little bit about homecoming. The only thing I ever win in my presentation is I have photos. So as soon as you figure that out, I'm done. But really was a great homecoming celebration. It is so nice to have, I think you'll hear us all the time, and I know families and students and staff feel the same way. It's nice to get back to some things that I refer to lovingly as pre-COVID. So just again, having our homecoming event and the pep rally, a lot of drama around that pep rally because seniors pulled it out at the last minute and were able to hang on to that trophy. And as much as students like to say it's rigged, we have the proof that there was a year the seniors didn't win. So, so you got to make sure you come in spirit. And then, again, just a great event. And the homecoming game itself was a lot of fun. Lila mentioned those great pieces, and having the Kid Zone was really awesome. And we had, we had a lot of people. I would say it's probably one of the largest homecoming events we've ever had with, with really great behavior of fans and students and everything. So it was great. Those are my slides before I put my Dr. Driffl hat on. Are there any questions?
No.
Awesome. So, here we go.
I thought you were going to put on a hat.
I put on my Dr. Driffl hat. No. So as you know, the board knows, and the, and the community, I hope knows, is that District Off, District Office works very closely together. So you know, we meet regularly, formally, but we're also meeting informally all the time, and we help and step in when needed. And so I just want to take some time to go over our business updates. And we're going to talk a little bit about a bid award for the stimulus-funded HVAC project, projects. And then also, we're going to talk about three audits. We've heard from one around our internal process. We also had an external process, and also our Office of the State Comptroller Audit. And then we'll also talk about the committee charter, the Audit Committee's charter that gets reapproved annually. And so for the bid award, we have two of these, the portions of the SIRS and ARPA stimulus program funding for the HVAC upgrade. So we've talked about this in past board meetings with parts of the federal COVID aid that we received. We really looked at air quality in our district and what we can do to make sure that air quality is viewed, looked at, made better as we move forward. And so the, really, we looked at, one of the areas is HVAC upgrades at Indian Landing and Bay Trail. And so we did have bids that were opened on September 15th, and it was a very competitive turnout for the board. As you may know, we do have to follow a bid process. There are some ways that we can use piggybacking. In this case, it was a competitive bid, and you never know what you're going to get. So businesses are out there, they come in, they, they give you a number on what, what they can do. It was very competitive, and we ended up with four contracts we hope to be awarded tonight. It was about $2.5 million, and something that we haven't seen in some time with the fiscal world that we're in, is they all came in under budget. So it's great news in this process. Most of this work will not begin until next summer. When we talk about HVAC, it really is a summer project because you're talking about pulling out windows, pulling out unit vents, you're in the classroom. It's not something you can do and teach math at the same time. So this really is summer work, and it would be looking at next summer. And so that's where we are here, and then I'll shift to the comptroller audit. And so the comptroller audit is the Office of the State Comptroller, and they have a role of auditing school districts and municipalities across the state, and they come in regularly. We've been through this process before. And a little bit of background, they did their field work, which means auditors were, were here at District Office from June 21st to November 21st. And what they focused on, their work, and they get to decide what they want to look at, they looked at procurement. And from February 2018 to November 2021 was originally. And when you know the Office of the Comptroller comes in, they can change the scope anytime they want. You know, they're, they're a regulatory organization, and they can shift. So they did extend the scope from back to July 1st, 2019. And, or original scope, sorry, the original scope period was July, and they moved it back to February 2018. So they expanded their scope a bit. The report is not yet public, but our response and corrective action plan is due to the comptroller's office this week. And so the report isn't public because it is, has to be released by the Office of the State Comptroller. So it's, we're going to talk about their recommendations and our corrective action plans, but then it doesn't actually get, the full audit doesn't get released until the comptroller releases it. And great news, no instances of fraud, abuse, or waste. They did provide eight recommendations, and if it's a recommendation from the comptroller's office, we're required to provide corrective action. And so I just want to go through what those recommendations are. Later, the board will have an opportunity to approve the recommended corrective action plans that we've put forth. And so the first two recommendations are really on the same topic, and that is to ensure a competitive process is used to procure goods and services, and also recommendation two is procure goods and services in accordance with statute. And so our corrective action plan, which is in there, is the district will seek attorney approval on future piggybacking utilization as we move forward. When the comptroller comes in and gives a recommendation, we also, through the Audit Committee and through the district, are able to take a look. And sometimes, we don't agree with the finding of the comptroller. In this case, we, we don't agree with this finding, and I just want to walk through it a bit. So this centers around a piggy, a piggybacking process that was used to award a roof contractor in the spring of 2020. So just if you can paint a picture, spring of 2020 was when we were all closed because COVID shut down all schools statewide. Governor said, nobody can be in our buildings. And so the, when we talk about piggybacking, that's our sort of internal language for schools and municipalities, but it really is General Municipality Law 10316. And the purpose of this is to reduce administrative and product cost and increase efficiencies. So it allows to not go through the typical bid process, but piggyback on other individuals, sorry, other municipalities, other states that have already gone through that process and come up with a competitive bid that we can then use for efficiencies. And so the recommendations we have are not really reflective of our practices. The report actually notes that we followed our procedure, and that Penfield was, quote, "better than most" around this concept. And the four tenants of the GML 103, we met all of them. We were cited as not enough documentation for justifying the best value element. So when we asked for what, how do you define best value, they can't really give us their definition of best value, but they felt that we didn't look at that enough. We disagree with that. We had an objective scoring matrix. We had a letter from our construction manager saying that the price we had was well within a good scope of work. It was COVID, and so we looked at best value also meaning reliability. That was when everything shut down, all work was put on hold for many companies. And so our reliability piece, we looked at, we weighted very highly. And so this roofing company that we went with was a local company. They did the work on time, they did the work on budget. And so we really stand strong that, that it, while the Office of the Comptroller may not want us to look at piggybacking, it is approved by the governor, it was approved for another three years. And so, but moving forward for corrective action, we can't go back, but moving forward, whenever we look to utilize piggybacking for our services, we will be asking our attorney for approval and get an attorney letter on letterhead. And we did check with our attorney, but did not have letterhead saying we did. So that's what we will do moving forward, and happy to do that. The, you're so good, thanks. The next, I skipped one. Oh, you got it. Okay, thank you. Just, you're ahead of me. So recommendation number three is around issuing RFPs for professional service in accordance with the district's purchasing policy and regulations. And so our corrective action plan is pretty easy. The district will consider issuing RFPs for certain professional services by the end of the school year. And while we really do appreciate this suggestion, it's not necessarily required by our policy or regulation. So our regulation and policy is that anticipated typically looking every five to seven years at services and getting an RFP to determine if there's a better cost out there. These services we look at are lots of things, but it's typically legal services, construction managers, architects. And as we look at that, we know and have talked about this along the way, which is that there is a high cost for switching such services in the middle of the year, or in the middle of a capital project, or the middle of the five-year review we do for building condition surveys. There's also, and when it comes to the legal firms is interesting because some districts have one legal firm, and that's all they use. And that's fine, and I would probably recommend that you do an RFP every five years for that. We actually, the board in July approves three legal services for Penfield so that we can really make sure that we're getting the best price for legal services based on their expertise. So we use one primarily for special education because that's their focus. We use another for foils. We use another for anything capital project related. And so while we can consider looking at that, there is really no competition because we hire the three main education law firms and have them to utilize when we need to. But we will, with the board's support, consider issuing RFPs in the year ahead. So the next three recommendations are all connected together, and really was around that the state and other government contract, we should be reviewing state and other government contracts to ensure the district is being charged in accordance with the contract, that we work with the vendor to obtain documents the vendor was contractually required to provide, and use this information to determine whether additional billing adjustments are needed, and that we contact vendors to obtain refunds for overpayments. And so we 100% agree and thank the comptroller's office for this recommendation based on their findings. We were billed by the quote of labor, but not the actual labor that happened. So the district overpaid in several instances. The amount of overpayment is not significant, but it's still overpay. So we immediately took that, dug deeper into it, and the refund for overpayment has been issued back to the district. So this is where we 100% appreciate the comptroller's work, the deep dive and taking a look in. Nobody likes to overpay, especially the district, and so we worked and got a refund for all of those overpayments. And then the last two are around the land purchase that the district purchased for the future home of the bus and transportation, Transportation and B&amp;G facility. And so the recommendation was to conduct and document a thorough analysis of alternatives before making major financial commitments. The recommendation number eight was to conduct and document a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis for real estate transactions. And I will just tell you that we don't really believe that, and we've had lots of conversations with the comptroller's office, that the recommendation language doesn't reflect the reality. So we had in this district an exhaustive process to plan for the new Transportation and B&amp;G facility. So about 20 years' worth of conversations, community meetings, board meetings, discussion. We've been looking at this for just over 20 years, and have, you know, not, land has fallen through, we've had plans that couldn't go. We're always looking for this. And so with that, the comptroller didn't look at the building aid considered for the return on investment, the fact that anything we did purchase was aided by about 73%. The report did not mention other locations that we did look at, nor district-owned property that was considered. We did look at Gloria Drive extensively. We talked about that in community presentations and at board meetings, and the reasons why that wouldn't work. We did look, and we have at least nine executive sessions with the board, all, each of those all for the purpose of parcel acquisition. So in terms of the conversations on, on our considered executive, because it has to do with potential land purchase. It did question, as it comes out, the market value of the parcel, and our research quickly indicates that it's within the range and retrospectively more than fair. Because when we made the purchase, shortly after that, the market took off and the cost has increased. And so the one piece is that they failed to mention, we've talked to them about, is all of this ended up going to the voters for the vote on purchasing the land. And so at the end of the day, that vote was about 2,200 to 800, don't quote me on that, but all of it was communication. We had a vote for the land purchase before we even brought the capital project to the community. Because if the community voted against that, we wouldn't have moved forward, obviously, with a capital project to build there. So, you know, from our stance, we feel like we've exhausted everything and talked about land purchase quite a lot, but they, their recommendation is that we had done some more. And so moving forward, we will explicitly weigh any potential change to New York State Transportation Aid when specific school bus route begins and ends are altered in the future. So as we look at building there, we will be doing deep analysis of state aid for buses. So when a bus is driving with no kids on it, the state aid is, is not as much as when the bus is driving with students on it. And so it's just the aid ratio that we will absolutely dig into as we look. And again, we've got some time before ground is broken. We have even more time before it's actually a new bus garage, but we'll be analyzing that moving forward. And so I'll stop here for board discussion. I know it's tricky because the community hasn't seen the audit. They will when the comptroller releases it. But do you have any questions on behalf of the recommendations or the Audit Committee's conversation around the corrective action plans?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The, I mean, the first thing is, you know, there's no findings. Findings would say we did something wrong. And recommendations are essentially things that, and some of this, as you said, is, can be opinion. Really, you should have objective evidence, but it sounds like there's, there's, and similar to last time, they're a little, sometimes a little soft with the objective evidence.
Yep.
But nonetheless, the purpose of this is not to say what you did wrong, but what you can do better. And in all of these audits, and historically in this one, you know, you take the approach of, you know, how can we do this better? And the ways, these are opportunities to improve our process, which is what this is really meant to be. And obviously, they found something that was a finding where we're not following the law. That's a different story. So I think that's, these kinds of things strengthen the, the way we manage our district. A question, and I have another comment in a minute, but the question, and you can interrupt me if someone else wants to speak. When you talk about recommendation number four, which is reviewing state and other government contracts, can you give some examples of what contracts those would fall into, or some examples of those contracts?
So recommendation number four?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is really the piece around, so when we purchase items, it can be a contract written by the state or another local municipality that we've partnered with. written by the state or another local municipality that we've partnered with. And so if we go through something like a bid that's on New York State, it wasn't our contract that we wrote, but we're utilizing the state as well. And so it's really making sure that all the contracts we have, we are reviewing to make sure that what we're being billed is accurate to what they need to collect. And so in those cases, it was overbilling for, for a couple of different services.
Okay, thanks. The, then it gets, then we get into the capital projects, which again, will be more my comment. We, there was a lot of work that went into that. I mean, and I think the public who knows or have followed along, we looked at multiple options. We did analyze very heavily using existing space and the pros and cons of that, the cost of doing that. We did analyze different properties. And we had an original purchase that fell through for, for basically suitability of the land that, that we found out through due diligence, which is the way it should be. And we had land that we owned that we thought we could use and that would have been very cost-effective, but it became out to be it was not suitable. So there was a lot of discussion. We went through, I'd say at least three iterations of this before we actually ended up with the right purchase. And every one of those things, we're required to find out with the competitive market values of that property. And we, and we followed that process and our bids are, our offers and our settlements are within those ranges. So I guess I'm just, and I, I'm sure you made the case, you know, and showed everything we did, but I just, I'm just kind of at a loss as to having been involved in that. What more they would be looking for?
I would say, I really appreciate that. And I think one of the things, Mark, you mentioned for the board and the community is, is, that is the piece around the comptroller, when they come in to do audits on local government or school districts, will always find a recommendation. In the history of audits, there has not been an audit by the comptroller where they say, "Good job. Everything's perfect. Keep up the good work." Right? They just, they don't. That's not their role, and I understand that. But it really is an important piece to hit that it's not a finding. There's no, there's no illegal, there's no fraud. And, you know, I stand by that all day long. But they are recommendations. And so in recommendations, you get some that we agree with 100% and others that we question, and it sort of goes back and forth. So when we met with the auditors in their, what they referred as the exit interview, we had those conversations. And, and it's also, it's also a political machine. So, you know, the, the three auditors who worked with Penfield were very open to those conversations, but ultimately said, you know, "We can bring the recommendations back, but we don't actually have any final say in the writing. It comes out of, comes out of Albany and their legal team and how they want to write things." And so we understand that. And, and I think the one piece where I'm proud of Penfield and the work we do is we're also gonna give the other side of it, right? We're, we're okay with the discourse. We're okay saying, "Okay, but here's how we see it," and back and forth. And none of it, like, for example, the, the land purchase piece, the question to me was, "Couldn't you find something more center in land?" And my stance was, "Do you want to go on a ride with me and I can show you the center of Penfield and where it is?" It's pretty tough. And when you look at where the bus garage, where we purchased the land, right across the street is a massive home project going in with, with a number of homes that'll be, you know, Penfield students, which sold for, you know, a significant price. And so as that land, we know that as land gets picked up and homes keep getting built in Penfield, it's getting harder and harder to find suitable land for, for a bus garage. We also put that into consideration because our bus garage now is four acres. It is at its max capacity. And beyond that, we know we have bus drivers who have to park across the street, across Five Mile, and then walk over every morning and every afternoon. We're out of space. And so knowing that we've, you know, been looking, you know, I've lived here since 2018, 2019, and bus garages have always, sorry, 2009, and the bus garage has always been a conversation at the board level. So on the other hand, though, I, their due diligence is in, in a perfect world of, of everything that could be there. We appreciate those recommendations and we have our corrective action plan and, and our response as well.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Other questions on that?
Ready?
Ready.
All right. Hope Dan's back next time. No, I was kidding. We hope Dan feels better. Yeah. So just a little bit more, we're still on audit. So these are, this is the external audit corrective plan. And so Mr. Zubor talked about this. One of the recommendations requiring a corrective action was that our food service C-fund, the year-end balance at the end of last school year was above the three months of revenue on average. And so basically, as you know from our food service, they work independently. So they're not, they're not, we do not necessarily, are not supposed to be paying for food service. They get their funding from the lunches they sell, from the federal aid they get back, and then that's the fund that you use to pay food service staff to, to outfit and buy food. It really should be sort of self-sufficient. And that's how, that's how it's supposed to work and is expected to work per the state. And so we've already put this corrective action plan, it's complete as of, it will be complete as of today, and then we'll monitor it moving forward. And so basically utilize $100,000 of the fund balance to bring the balance levels to those limits that we have set. And so, and they also mentioned that they had two others, Tom mentioned, two other prior year recommendations that when they reviewed again, had already been completed to the auditor satisfaction. So I think, as you know, and if you own a business or if you're involved, we get audited a lot, internal audits, external audits, the state audit, and we're always trying to, to make sure that we meet all recommendations. The next slide is the internal audit corrective action. And so with the internal audit, we, it was focused on the scope is the bus garage operational procedures, which we were happy they took a look at because we're at some point gonna move our bus garage. So let's take a look now at our operation procedures. They did have some recommendations that require corrective action. Number one was to complete transition to a new inventory system, and our goal is to have that done by the end of this year. Just, it's really outdated. We need a, we need a better inventory system because there are a lot of parts coming in and out of transportation. As a reminder, like our bus mechanics fall under transportation. So you think about all the stuff they're doing on buses, nonstop, to make sure that they're roadworthy. So we'll have that new inventory system in place by the end of the year. I loved their recommendation number two, which is to fill mechanic vacancies. So, you know, I did ask, like, "Do you have some that we know of?" But we have, so completed as of today. We are, I believe, Steve, we've got, we're fully staffed with our mechanics. And so we're glad to report that, that that's done. And as you know, the, the competitive job market now, but, but we're happy to report we're able to fill that. And then three, four, and five had to do with complete bus parts count and instill new review process. So this is gonna require a full new process. So we've set a corrective action deadline by the end of next summer to give us time. But really what this came down with is there's a lot of parts that we had that we'd hang on to. And it really started with COVID with supply chain. So if you ever know, like, we've all talked about supply chain where you order it, but then it takes four months to get there, well, you need something immediately. So I would say we have more than we need in some of those areas. So it was a good, it was a good audit recommendation. And so we really want to have a clear process on how we take a look at what bus parts we have, you know, do we keep them? Do we sell them if we have too many? You know, do we recoup the cost? But ultimately, it can, we also understand, you know, why it was, especially during COVID, and supply chain concerns of things not getting there in time. And so we'd hang on to parts. And so we're, we're working through that process. And then the last two recommendations focused on ensuring a dual approval verification for all delivery receipts before payment. And that's really about the amount of things that are coming into the bus garage, in our garages, and just making sure that we have dual approval verifying that things were delivered before we pay. And so that was, they really just found that, you know, it was just one person and you probably should have more than one, keep an eye on that. And so that is complete as of today. It was a great recommendation and we're able to shift quickly and we've got that in place already today. And then my last piece is the audit committee charter. And so the audit committee met last week, reviewed the charter that gets approved annually. There were no suggested revisions to the committee charter this year, and it was approved by the audit committee. And that typically happens at the first meeting, the first audit meeting of the school year. And then board discussion.
Board members, questions on, Mark?
One quick question. The inventory system, is that adable? And is that something that's adable since it is related to transportation?
Let me ask Dan. Dan? I don't want to answer that question. I'll answer it anyway with saying, "I don't know. I think so." Because most things that run through transportation do receive aid. If it's an inventory system that also goes through BOCs, it's potential there's aid that way. But that would be a question we can check with Dr. Driffl. I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, although I just said yes. But officially, for the record, I'm not 100% sure, and we'll check with Dan. It's a great question.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think it was really wise of us to choose to do the bus garage as our internal audit. It's kind of like when you move to a new house, you can start fresh. I think that was really wise and very forward-thinking.
I appreciate it because the internal audit is, is one where, you know, we can point to where we think there could be issues. And I think it's just so important when you look at the audit and how big the district is and, and all, you know, we have 1,000 employees and we have multiple departments and, you know, that's nice, is that, you know, we're not gonna pick things that are, that we think will be easy. We're looking to find recommendations so we can streamline and be better. And so I, I really, all of those, we really agree with 100% and, and I appreciate you noting that, and I'll make sure that, that Dan and, and our district treasurer, Bill Maloney, are aware.
I agree. I just wanted to agree, especially when we were just talking two meetings ago about, like, how the inventory system's gonna look like at the new bus garage and the reading that whole audit just really made me think, wow, this is really, really great. To think about how it's gonna look at the new space and how it's gonna be organized and how they can find things and all that stuff.
I kept thinking, Lisa, and I, I hope I'm, I hope I'm not the only one. But I moved, I mentioned in 2009, to Penfield. I have boxes in my basement I have not opened from the old house. Plus boxes I never opened in the old house. So we, we sort of joked about that with, like, the inventory stuff is before we move into a new house down the road, like, we want to make sure we're not bringing over stuff we don't need. So let's figure out the inventory system, make sure, and then, and then move forward. So if I move again, all that stuff is getting thrown out. So I figured I don't need anymore. All right, I appreciate that. Concludes superintendent reports.
Awesome, thank you. All righty, that brings us to public comment period. Instructions to participate in public comment period are listed in the agenda and available online. You may email Kathleen. We will not be responding to comments during this session as a reminder. Any concerns raised will be referred to appropriate district staff to follow up. Comments are limited to three minutes or less and should not name a specific student or staff in public session. And as always, please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Our first speaker this evening is, my glasses back on, Mr. Leonardo. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carmen Leonardo, and my address is 1915 Penfield Road. I'm here this evening on behalf of Penfield United for Education Excellence. The administration has introduced its DEI plan for the school year, and it's clear that they have chosen to become more insular, less transparent than before, limiting access to parents in the process. The core team and subcommittee meetings are set up to have no impact since the number of meetings and meeting length have been greatly reduced. The subcommittees are only for show. They are scheduled to meet four times for one hour by Zoom. What level of input do you hope to achieve in four hours spread over the entire school year? None. The core team is scheduled to meet five times for one and a half hours by Zoom, also for show. But the composition of the core team requires further scrutiny. It is a committee comprised of 32, 25 of which are district employees or members of the Board of Education. Almost half of these are in upper-level policymaking positions. So whatever the core team comes up with is highly subjective and under the direct control of the superintendent and the agenda of his direct reports, who, by the way, lead most of the DEI subcommittees. The superintendent's assertion to me that this is not a decision-making body and therefore not subject to public audience is absurd. What's the big secret? What do you not want the public to hear? Also part of the initiative is the community conversations. In the first, the speaker spoke about what makes up a family and then about the demographics that make up Penfield. The next one is a talk on indigenous people and the history of Penfield. And another will be about segregation in the Rochester City School Districts, which has nothing to do with Penfield schools. It seems the purpose of the community conversations is to educate the community, but not about what is happening in our schools. They have nothing to do with your job. You should be focused solely on providing education to our children. Educating the community on these topics is not your role, and every effort you put toward it is a waste of public resources that should be spent in the classroom. And I turn to the board. It's your responsibility to stop this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Maher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dana Maher, 1690 Cultural Road. First, I would like to thank the administration and the board for your time and energy in hearing feedback shared and any work you may be doing in exploring how to utilize that feedback most effectively to enhance the way the district serves students and families. I also want to commend the district and students on what's being done with the Penfield's promise. I recently had the opportunity to watch a video with several speakers from the Global Leadership Summit. The speakers included Vanessa Van Edwards on Science of Connecting, John Aikoff in The Two Steps of a Winning Mindset, Heidi Grant on the Science of Leveraging a Growth Mindset, and Stephanie Chung, Adapting Your Leadership to Today's Challenges. These leaders spoke about great leadership and how to accomplish that. What I took away most importantly was that regardless of what position you are in, particularly for our students, is how to go from struggling or being moderately good at something to being good or great at something by simply shifting your mindset and working in the direction regardless of one's circumstances. These speakers gave evidence-based examples from research on these topics. Vanessa Van Edwards shared about how people's luck changes based on how lucky they believe they are. You create your success by how you shift your perception and belief about yourself. She also explained the science between what makes the difference between good leaders and great leaders. Great leaders have increased neuroactivity in response to them understanding emotion in addition to logistics, where good leaders tend to focus on just the logistics. Great leaders develop rapport and connection with others. She also explained the three levels of connection and how to break social scripts in order to improve the social connection. Much of the district's curriculum, supporting culturally responsive teaching and SEL, focus on the fact that some may have life experiences that are difficult that create disadvantage to them having the same success as others. While it is valid that everyone has different experiences and some come from tough situations, why don't we work towards shifting the mindset to one of growth and success rather than being a victim of these circumstances? Our greatest successes often come after many failures, as was shared by Vanessa Van Edwards about her own experiences. Having reviewed the New York State Ed Guidance Memo dated March 18th, 2019, it seems appropriate that this mindset shift could be effectively incorporated into the education system in a way that the SEL curriculum guidelines being driven by the state ed system can still be met while shifting into a more success-driven model. It would be impressive to see the district explore adopting this mindset shift in its curriculum. Penfield would be a leader that stands out in the community modeling a different way of looking at how we support students and working most effectively towards success academically, socially, and emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Ms. Scorsone. Is that right?
Yeah. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amory Scorsone, and I reside at 11 Creekside Circle. I'm here tonight as a parent of children who are Latinx. And I am also a member of the Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance Steering Committee. I wanted to acknowledge the school district tonight for its support of, its support and action of DEI. Unlike the previous speakers this evening, I fully Unlike the previous speakers this evening, I fully appreciate the implementation of your new recruitment practices to have a diverse staff and faculty. Representation matters, and as educators and leaders in the education system, and as parents and community members, you probably know better than I that representation and diversity are crucial in childhood development. I want to recognize that we are about halfway through National Hispanic Heritage Month, and later, in a few days, there's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so, I thought it would be best to talk about my family, and that I have daughters who are about 20% indigenous. They come from different places in Latin Central America. They were born in Puerto Rico, in the NICU, at 10 weeks early. They are now 12 years old, in the eighth grade. Both had straight As last year. It was the first time that they had had straight As in their whole academic career. When you do not see yourself represented in your life, in school, and in your community, you feel invisible. My children, while I am fluent in Spanish, they are not. They actually lack a lot of self-confidence in speaking Spanish. So, when we discussed National Hispanic Heritage Month, they asked if they were Hispanic, because they did not speak Spanish, which led to me going onto the internet with them to look. And I found amazing resources. There is a National Hispanic Heritage resource page, it's a .gov, and it actually has resources from the National Archives, the Library of Congress, Congressional Library, National Endowments of Humanities and Arts. They also had curriculum resources for teachers from the National Park Service, which I thought was just incredible. So, knowing that mainstream educational resources tend to leave out Latinos, Latinx people from the books, American history, art, politics, sports.
Oh, that's time.
Okay, well, it's a great resource. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Got a new timer, sorry. I would have just kept going. All right. All right. Board members, we are on Facilities. Number six, the resolution for the stimulus-funded work that Dr. Potnum, aka Dan, talked about. May I have a motion, please, and a second, that the board hereby authorize its president, the superintendent of schools, or their designee to execute contracts in compliance with this resolution, the bid solicitation documents, the project scope, and the project timeline, and take all necessary actions or convenient on behalf of the Board of Education to enter into the said contracts and complete the project as listed. So moved. And it will take effect immediately, sorry. No, it's fine, I realized I should have said that. So, Kristin, motion, and Mark, second, all those in favor? All in favor and not opposed, thank you. So, we're moving on to the comptroller audit report. So, may we have a motion, please, and a second, that the Board of Education receive the draft report of the examination of the New York State Comptroller, and approve the associated response and corrective action as discussed in Tom's report. So moved.
Second.
So, we have motion by Catherine, second by Emily, all those in favor? All in favor, not opposed, thank you. So, we're moving on to the internal audit. May I please have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education accept the internal control audit and associated corrective action plan for the control cycle ending June 30, 2022? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Emily, second by Mark, all those in favor? All in favor, not opposed, thank you. And we have our external audit. May I have a motion, please, and a second, that the annual external audit by Mangle, Mexker, Barr &amp; Company, LLP, Raymond F. Wagner, CPA, PC, Division of the District's Basic Financial Statements, and the management letter for the year ended June 30, 2022, be accepted, and further that the associated proposed corrective action be approved? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kristin, second by Emily, all those in favor? All in favor, not opposed. And then, per the Commissioner's Regulation, we re-adopt the Penfield Audit Committee Charter each year. So, may I have a motion, please, and a second, that the Penfield Audit Committee Charter is approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Catherine, all those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Okay, and then, we have a policy for deletion, which we... Do you want to speak to that? Sure.
Yeah, I'd love to, because I did receive a couple of emails, and so I'm glad people are looking at the agendas and taking a look. So, the question is that this is, this policy is the Board of Education's policy on National Honor Society, that has been a policy for a long time. And Policy Committee does a year, a five-year review, we've talked about before, and they review policies, and policies pop up that we look at. So, the Penfield School Board utilizes one of two policy services that are throughout New York State. We utilize, through the Board, Erie County Policy Service. The other one is the New York State School Board Policy Service. And we've looked at that in the past, and cost benefit. We've always, for a long, long time, that I've known to use Erie County. So, we're able to reach out to them and say, hey, we have a therapy dog we're looking at, do you have a policy for therapy dogs? And they'll send us a sample policy that they might have. So, we reached out to say, hey, do you have a National Honor Society policy? And we got from Erie BOSIs, which is, they highly recommend that the Board doesn't have a singular policy around a singular club, because it really is below the purview of the Board, in terms of getting involved with National Honor Society. And so, this deletion of policy is really, it's not a required policy, and the Board has, if you've looked over the last couple of years, looked at policies that we don't need to have, in terms of deleting. But National Honor Society is near and dear to many people, and so, just as a clear response is that just because the policy goes, National Honor Society does not. So, National Honor Society stays. It is overseen by the National Honor Society Advisors and the Building Principal, Mrs. Watt. There's no changes to how NHS has done. If there were any changes, it would be a conversation with myself as superintendent, our committee, and obviously, I'd keep the Board in the loop and the community. But the policy has nothing to do with National Honor Society still running, still being a part of everything Penfield stands for. So, I hope that clarifies, but I did get two questions about that, and I wanted to make sure.
And that was what those questions were?
Exactly, yes. Yep, so the question, it came up at a PTA meeting from the high school, because it was talked about, and so, the question was, is by getting rid of the policy, is the district getting rid of National Honor Society? So, no, not at all. But I understand that, too, if you look at deleting a policy, and you don't follow the Board and understand what the policies are used for, and that we've deleted policies we don't need before. So, the process stays in, all of the requirements are there. The Board, in my time, has never got involved with National Honor Society. It's just a club that we have. We don't have policies for every other club that we have. Maybe we need one for the Pinterest club, but no, we don't. So, it's really, I just wanted to clarify, because if I got two email questions, there's surely more out there. And just on behalf of the district, again, I've talked to Mrs. Watt, the Building Principal, this is just about cleaning up our policies. And when our policy service that we utilize says, we recommend you don't have an NHS policy, we take the policy service, you know, and take a look. So, I hope that helps, but again, nothing changes with the guidelines, bylaws, and everything else for the National Honor Society out of Penfield High School, it's just no longer a Board policy.
Quick question. So, if there's a change in staffing, you know, Mrs. Watt goes, you go, got the bit, that it's not going to be vulnerable to...
No.
It's not like a subjective policy, because it's not in here?
I think it's a great question. I think that our community has spoken loudly, National Honor Society is one of our strongest extracurricular clubs at the high school. It is, you know, you do have to meet a minimum GPA in order to be, in order to apply. So, it's not open to all, you've got to have a 93 GPA your junior year to apply, and then it's reviewed by three other factors, that there's a committee involved. So, you know, there's a big process involved with it. We've got a long partnership with the National Honor Society, it's a national organization. So, the question is, if there was a staffing change...
Did the new staff just say, you know what, we don't want to do this anymore?
I think if our new staff did that, they would become our old staff. So, no, I'm not, I'm really not worried about that, similar to robotics. We don't have a policy on robotics, but if robotics just went away, we would have lots of people from robotics here. And you can say that for lots of different clubs. National Honor Society is a unique situation, because not everybody can apply. You have to have a GPA that's all underneath the National Honor Society guidelines and regulations. Districts can tweak what that GPA is, but we've had ours at a 93, or equivalent of 93, when we were on a four-point scale many years ago. So, I think it's a great question, it's a valid question, that if there's a change, could something happen? We could say that for every single program we have that we don't have a policy for. And I would tell you, I'm talking to Mrs. Watt, talking to my team, talking to the Board, National Honor Society is something that, you know, will continue on. Really, the issue is sometimes is how deep a Board gets in the weeds. So, in regards to, you know, the Board sitting on the selection committee for NHS wouldn't be good. When you have questions, it really goes through that process of going to the advisors, then going to the Building Principal, and then coming to me if there's a concern or question about National Honor Society, or wanting to get in, and you didn't get in. Those conversations happen every year. And so, the policy service is really a focus on, that's not for the Board's purview, you don't want students coming in, arguing their case in front of the Board. It's sort of beyond the scope of the Board. So, I understand the recommendation, Policy Committee discussed it. That was a really long answer, which I'm really good at for that, but I also want to clarify, it's important, I don't see it happening.
Other questions on that? No? Okay. So, then, may I have a motion, please, and a second, that policy 7455 be deleted from the district policy manual as submitted, effective immediately?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Catherine, second by Mark, all in favor? All in favor and not opposed, thank you. And then, we're moving on to committee meetings. So, Mark, were you at Labor Relations Meeting?
I was.
You were cheering.
I was cheering, so we just...
I knew you were traveling around recently, so I wasn't cheering.
I tried to, fortunately, I've got my travel to work around some of these. The, this meeting of Labor Relations actually was a panel discussion. The two of the panelists are in the agenda, so I have their names, but it's basically Superintendent of Hilton and the Superintendent of Pittsford. I think they brought their business officials with them as well. And what they were really talking about is post-pandemic supply chain considerations. We had some conversation about supply chain over the course of this meeting, and they really got into the weeds on the kinds of impacts supply chain, I mean inflation, supply chain difficulties and inflation have on the organization. And, you know, I won't go through this long list, but, you know, the examples are, especially in the food areas, where normally, food was going up 3%. This year, this year, it went up 20%. So, and that's, and we talked about, we set our prices already, and we've got to be, as Tom said, we've got to be cost-neutral, it's got to be self-sustaining. You know, it's kind of an independent contractor, essentially, they're running separate from us, they've got to be self-sustaining. And then, on top of that, the availability of ingredients are a problem, and some of the food manufacturers are actually pulling out of servicing K-12. So, there's a lot of difficulties that, you know, you just think, okay, we get the food, we make the food, we send it to the kids. There's a lot more that goes into that, and then, you know, and what everybody wants is kind of a smooth, level economic environment, because it makes things easy. And when things go out of whack with COVID, and with supply chain and inflation, it just exacerbates the problem. So, that was one of the examples about that. And then, you talked about the fact that it also does impact families who, you know, have financial difficulties paying for that food, it affects them as well, because inflation hits everything else in their life as well. And then, time management's much more critical, because of staff shortage, so they have to really manage their staff as optimally as possible. And, you know, that includes a lot of cross-training of staff to do essential managerial services. There was some conversation about staff who are under one contract, one bargaining unit, doing work in another area, and how they manage that. Dan was here, so he saw, he was there, so he saw all that as well, and saw this presentation. And then, he talked about facilities and capital projects, there's a lack of contractors, of course, cost goes up, impact on debt scheduling, which is a very careful thing that Dan does to make sure that we have a very consistent level of debt and revenue from the state. All those things can throw these out of whack, and it just makes everything much more difficult. So, you know, we always have, in one way or another, we always have some kind of environmental difficulties that make our life harder, make your lives harder. And this is just, it's just continuing, this is the way it looks right now. But it was a very good presentation, they really did get into a lot of depth.
Thank you. Questions for Mark on that comment? Thank you. And then, Tom, you were at the Fall Law Conference, I wanted to go to that, was it good?
Yeah, it was. So, I was at the Monroe County School Board Association puts on a Fall Law Conference. There were attorneys from BOSIs, too, and a couple of law firms. The focus really was around red flag laws, and students with, like guns, and sort of like how to keep schools safe. There's this red flag law in terms of, you know, if we have a concern, working with the police to determine if there's guns in the home, and do they need to be, do they need to be held during a concern? So, a lot of these legalities, because it's America and New York State, and gun laws are something that I don't want to be involved in, so I'll just sit here. But we went through a lot of the legalities of what that could look like, just some stories and things to keep an eye on for. They also talked a lot about, it's a common conversation around the need for behavior intervention teams, and monitoring students, staff, community, just like making sure that you're doing everything to keep students safe and keep our schools safe. And so, they referenced, you know, RockTAC, the Monroe County, basically Behavior Intervention Group, and that looks countywide. And so, it was really focused on those nuances. And then, there was some around law updates around students with disabilities, and just, again, going through the law piece. So, I would tell you that, for Board members, it's, those law conferences are great to go, all right? I would say I didn't leave there with like, oh my God, I didn't know that, that was great. But it's really the power in other districts, and other Board members, and superintendents, just those conversations. So, it's some of those, sort of like, how different things have been handled in each district, and hearing and learning from that. So, I did have to, I did have to leave a bit early, but again, it was well-attended. And I was there to make sure everybody knew Penfield was represented, so I hope that helps.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on that? Okay, so then, we have our district community committee meetings, audit. Do we have anything more on audit? I know we talked a whole lot about audit tonight.
It's what was covered.
Okay, got it.
That was basically it.
Yeah, it was basically our audit meeting.
Right there.
Yeah.
All night tonight was audit meeting? That's okay.
Longer, do you want me to go longer? Because it's a long meeting.
That one's always a long meeting.
It actually did, yeah, it was. Well, there was a lot to cover.
Yeah. All right, and then, we had our September Code of Conduct meeting, I attended, and Nicole attended, I don't, do you, is there anything that you want to share?
I thought it was a great start, I mean, it was the second meeting, but it was sort of the start in my mind. Sort of identifying who was in the room and who wasn't in the room, in terms of people who weren't represented. And then, talking about what disproportionality means, and then, you know, statistics in terms of disproportion, disproportionality when it comes to suspensions and other kinds of disciplinary actions. So, and then, why, you know, a bunch of potential reasons why that might be. So, it just sort of whetted my appetite. So, um, it just sort of whetted my appetite to, um, begin to answer those questions. Um, I don't, I don't really like asking questions without answering them. Time is too precious.
Right. Sometimes you leave those and you have more questions.
No, but it's a process. So I'm, you know, I, I look forward to hearing more from folks and stuff.
Yeah. No, I thought it was good. It was nice to have, um, our students there. And that I think felt comfortable speaking up and out about things. So I thought that was really great. We had, um, middle school students and, um, and some high school students. So I thought, yeah, I thought it was really great, really great meeting.
And those, the list of all, of all the committee members on the Code of Conduct are online on our webpage. And, uh, it was nice, I think, when you see stakeholders in a room. So I agree, sort of first, second meeting or second, first meeting, because the first was really just to get to know you on, on Zoom. Um, and so this was, um, this was our first time in person. But having students' voices and parents and community members and, uh, district and building staff and teachers, I think is just, uh, it's a good start in terms of really taking a holistic view. And, you know, the last time, the, the, our Code of Conduct came into existence in 1979, I believe. So, um, so I think it was just a good, a good time to, again, all year long, review it. And we'll keep providing updates, you know, through this process.
That's great. Any questions on that, board members? All right. So we want to do our resolution discussion this evening because the meeting is not, it's virtual and it's next week already, right? Or two weeks? It's soon. It's before our next meeting. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, it should be before our next meeting.
So I think, um, if you go on your agenda, I had, um, the lovely Kathleen. She added in a link for the voting guide and Mark's notes from the, um, Area Two meeting. So we can take a few minutes, um, to spend some time on that. And Mark, if you want to lead us through that discussion, that would be lovely.
Really, so just as a recap for the community and also some new board members, we are a member of the New York State School Board Association. They, they serve all the, collectively, we, they serve the interests of public education from a school board perspective. The, uh, what they do is also, they're in Albany, and they help advocate for us as a group, as this group of New York State, for, you know, laws that we think will be beneficial or, or funding or anything that will be beneficial for the, for the schools. What they base that upon is the will of the member districts. And that will is defined by resolutions. So district, member districts can submit resolutions for approval by, by the body. And those resolutions are basically the directions that will tell the New York State School Association what to do. This is every year, and what this is, is the resolutions for this year. And they...
And so just for new board members too, it, sometimes it feels like there's subjects that should be in there, but they sunset. So, so you'll see there's sunsetting ones, and then, so sometimes you'll be like, why didn't they talk about X? Well, because they did that last year. So sometimes it seems that it's, you know, it's focused on one thing because there are newer resolutions, and then you see some sunsetting ones. And so all districts send up, they're, they're not required to, but they're asked to send a voting member. So this year, Mark's our voting member. And so in this discussion, since Mark's voting on our, our behalf, it's nice to have a, a discussion about how we're thinking, right? And, and how we look at and view the resolutions because they're from all over the state. And so, um, some things don't always pertain to our district as they do to, to other districts.
And on top of that, there's, uh, there's a wide variety of opinions within school districts amongst the state. And we're not all homogenous the same way.
Right.
Now, uh, there is, what you see here are the 43 resolutions that we have this year. And we will just talk about, talk about them before we get into it. They, they, there's a resolution committee, which is, again, a subset from districts around the state that review these and say which ones do they think have merit to move forward. So those are recommended resolutions. Of the 43 we have, uh, was the number 32 recommended. Then there's other ones that they don't think really have merit or that they, that should be pushed forward. They don't recommend them. That, they all come to, they all are eligibly voted on. There's just some procedural differences. So what I would just, I would start out by saying, and as Lisa mentioned, there's eight, nine that are renewed. So because if it was approved, it's approved for five years, and after five years, they sunset, and then there's opportunity to reapprove it. So you, and what you see here are the eight that are, um, up for renewal. And we, and again, we had this Area Two resolution, which is our local area, where we discussed it and just had a, just had a straw poll. How do we feel about this? Of those, all of them were voted, were pretty much yes. Now, there's one that I voted undecided on mainly because I needed clarification, which was supporting accommodations for students with, uh, supporting testing accommodations for students with disabilities. And it was really more asking, wanting to see clarification about what is asked for beyond what is currently available. So it's not that I don't agree with it. It's just that is, you know, just clarity on what they're asking for. And that, so that's the only reason I had that. Now, the, the area, they, um, they were 40% yes and 60% undecided, like, like myself. So, um, now, and again, you guys interrupt about any of these, you want to, as we go here. All the, you can see the others, and again, there's, there's a number of them. So I really don't want to go through the ones that are, that were 100%, everyone's in favor of it. You know, like state, state enhance support, state enhancing support for school districts in response to cybersecurity threats. That's, everyone's in favor of that.
Right, right.
So...
So can you, can I, if I can jump in?
Yes.
So 14, supporting comprehensive reform of foundation aid. I'm surprised that a lot of people were undecided on that because it's vague. Is that what the concern is on that one?
Well, because that's essentially the resolution. You know, the resolution, remember, there's a, a whereas and a therefore be resolved. And then there's a lot of, a lot of supporting argument.
Right, right.
The supporting argument is not part of the outcome.
Correct.
That's just for discussion. That resolution is just basically saying, reform the, the foundation aid formula.
Okay. But how? Right?
But how and to what outcome, what, to what intent? Uh, you know, there's, there's, you know, some districts were probably put at a disadvantage when that was first set in place. I think one of our local districts was as well. So it's, it's not a matter of that. It's right or wrong. And that's why I had put undecided.
Right.
I want to hear more information about what's the outcome of that because it could hurt us.
Right, right.
And at the same time, we want to help other districts that are being harmed. So that's where, that's where that was undecided. And, and again, I can go to the other undecided ones as well if you want, which, there's one that sounds very good on the upfront, which is to make it, make the law, to make it a felony for any district employee to have lewd or sexual relations with a current student in the district regardless of age of consent. Now that, on the face of it, sounds perfect, makes perfect sense. And, you know, you want to avoid with the, oh, what-if scenarios and try to nuance it to death. But the reality is any state employee, we think of that, we think of teachers, administrators, teachers aides, people who are facing the students. At the same time, we have bus drivers, we have mechanics, we have buildings and grounds people, we have hall monitors. Maybe that one. But, you know, they could be, they could be young. I mean, they could be, you know, they could be 18. They could be 19. And, and legally, we have, we could have students up to the age of 21. Now, oftentimes there's reasons for that, but there could be health reasons where they're, you know, where they're, they've lost a year and they're, and they're still in school. So we end up with this, I guess they call it the Romeo and Juliet syndrome, where they're really about the same age or close to the same age, but they, but it falls into this area where someone could, um, you know, it could be a felony. It could be like, they could be neighbors. You could have someone who's a graduate working for the district, someone's a student, they could be neighbors. So it's, again, what I really want to do is not be against it, but I think it can be, is improved to address those issues. So it's really, it's the undecided right now is can we come up with a resolution, come up with an amendment to the resolution that kind of speaks to those things so we don't have that unintended consequence, which could be fairly tragic for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where, that's one of the ones that was undecided.
So at the meeting too, so Mark or anyone actually has an opportunity to offer an amendment to, we did that one year.
We've done that before. We've offered, we've put together resolutions. We've put together amendments. They've changed the rules because of COVID.
Oh, okay.
And there was some talk about that, which, you know, it's, I won't drag it on any further. But the main thing is they don't allow amendments from the floor.
Oh, all right. Never mind. Then scratch that.
The amendments can be submitted in writing, and the deadline is the 13th. So, uh, we have time to do that.
Okay.
And I, and I would like to do that for that one especially. Uh, and so that's, so we can amend these, and there's a couple of others. Uh, there's another one about, um, what was it? Authorizing, um, basically authorizing districts to pull, borrow money from their existing reserve funds to cover temporary cash flows. And we have, and I forgot what it was called. I've got it written down here. Oh, oh, revenue anticipation notes. And we've, we've authorized revenue anticipation notes if there was a case where we have a cash flow shortfall, which could be the state hasn't quite paid us our, um, our, uh, funding aid, our foundation aid. And then we know we're getting it. We've got a little cash flow issue. We can create a, it's like a really, a very short-term note. That's a very common thing. But now to start opening the door to authorize pulling from, um, what I'm trying to think of here, to pull from reserves, you know, it could be, it, it could open doors. So I'm, that's more of an undecided one. I'm not, you know, again, I'm not really against it. The one I am against, sorry to say this, but I am against this, which is that would allow the school board members to receive a stipend for their work.
What? Just kidding.
You know, we don't do this for the money and, and, so that just, there, there are only the big five that get paid for that. Um, other than everyone else, it is a volunteer position. And I think that keeps it, um, it, it keeps the intent and the motivation to be true. There, there was another one which I'm going against, which is to fully fund and reimburse districts, uh, districts for exemptions for veterans. We had this discussion about veterans, and, and my personal position is that it's not about whether veterans are deserving of this. It's that the way, we were very restricted in how we could decide this, and there was no means test. And there are veterans that certainly need aid. And there's veterans that come out of, come out of, um, the military, get great careers, and they have, and they don't need this kind of assistance. So that's the reason, and I wish they would let us make it more, I wish they'd give us more latitude, but they didn't, and so I couldn't do it. Now for this one, in my opinion, is that we just become a pass-through. It's basically just saying, you know, create this exemption, and the state will give you money, and we'll give it to the veterans. Well, get us out of the middle. Just give, just make a star exemption supplement. You know, we have them for the, for seniors. If everyone has a star, we have them for seniors. Create a star supplement for veterans and take us out of the middle of it. And that way, it doesn't, it also doesn't complicate our managing of property tax revenue and invoicing and all, all of that. So that's, that's one I think is well-intended but incorrectly executed.
Right.
And there was one about strengthening gun laws, background checks, red flag laws, and, and it, I'm, and increasing the age of 21. You know, there, I'm undecided. I was probably the one undecided. It's, it's, there's a, there's a conflict between, as school boards should be advocating for safety in our school and where is the boundary of the response, where is the boundary of the, essentially the scope of, of interest? I don't see interest. Can't think of that word. Authority for school boards.
Right. Well, in the scope for this, right.
You know, we don't, we don't know how many, what kind of social issues do we get into that has a step too far away from, from education. Obviously, school safety, school violence, guns in school is definitely within our purview. And so it's, uh, I think that's one where, you know, I want to, interested in what the, what the board has to say about that.
Which one, which number is that?
That is, um, 26.
26.
You know, certainly interested in what the board has to say about that. And at the same time, there, there is, there, there's at least one amendment proposed. Uh, when you hear what the discussion is at the, at the meeting, and we'll see.
Well, it says it has a proposed amendment.
It's in the, it's in the, um,
It's in the resolutions guide, yeah.
It's at the back. It's at the very end.
Oh, at the end. Okay. I think that's another one, depending on how it's worded, could be, right? For, if it's worded towards school safety versus a blanket.
So, and, and again, there's a lot of, you know, all that supporting information, supporting argument in there has a lot of information, but that's, really comes down to they act upon that, therefore be resolved, which is what we've got, which I've pasted in here.
So is your question, so is your question whether school boards should be a voice in that?
So, yeah, essentially that's it. I mean, you know, it, it comes, and, and, you know, like Tom said, you know, some of these things, you know, they're so divisive that, you know, you're reluctant to get into the middle of it. But when we look at it from our role as board members and looking at the safety of our, of our schools, is, is this within that purview or not?
And so what was, what was the outcome of that conversation?
Well, as far as the straw poll, what did I say? What number did I say that was? I moved it. 26, yeah. I think it was, uh, the straw poll, 30 were, 30% were for, I'm sorry, 60% were for, 30% were against it, and 10% were undecided, which was probably just me. Because there weren't that many people on the call.
You're the 10%.
You know, it was, it was a percent, the outcome, it was like a poll on Zoom, and it gave you percentages, not people counts.
Yeah.
And, you know, people may not vote for anyone.
So that just gives an idea of the, our local districts, what people are thinking.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So...
And, again, these are all, uh, things that, that have been in the, in the public conversation, such as background checks, red flag laws, and the age, um, making the age 21. Now, they're not, they're not, um, new, new approaches that haven't been in the public realm.
Right, right.
The last, the, I'd say the last one that I would talk about is, that was a recommended, is that, um, so it makes changes that reduces the impact of New York State Charter schools on traditional districts. And, and, again, that was, that was a little nebulous there as well. So I, and there was a, and I was undecided. Half the people were undecided on that. I think we, it's too vague. So that's the, you know, we really need to know what that means because, again, we can say one thing, and then the, and it can be interpreted. Again, interpretation is 90% of, of legislation, right? So, so that's undecided, just because I don't really know what they're saying. It's not, it's not a for or against. Then there's the remaining 10, where ones that were not recommended. There, and you can see them there, all this, this straw poll was pretty much either, um, fully no, or there was a couple undis, where it was mainly no, and there was like one person who was undecided. And you can see those there. And in my opinion, I agree that all of these were, were no. And, and we get, we, again, this comes back to where some school districts in different parts of the state, you know, again, we're, we're suburban. You've got urban districts, you've got rural districts like the Southern Tier or the, or the, um, North Country. You have Downstate, New York City, you've got Long Island. You know, there's a lot of different, um, a lot of different communities, and they have, and those communities have different philosophies. So that's, that's where you get some of these that maybe are more unique, and thus they don't, they get not recommended.
Right, right.
So...
Well, thank you so much for doing that and for sending notes. Um, is there anything in particular anyone wants to ask Mark? And of course, we can, um, email him any questions that come up, or if we want to work on an amendment on the side. We've done that before too.
Could you explain 37 a little bit?
I'm sorry, which one?
37.
37.
Parental right legislation.
Parental rights legislation, it would, um, and basically, it basically says it protects the parents' fundamental rights to direct the upbringing of their children, which includes and not limited to matters of education, medical care, moral, religious, and character training. In addition, the parents have the right to be informed about their children's educational programs and should require school districts to promote parental involvement, provide access to curricula, instruction materials, and legally protected rights, parent, legally protected parents' rights to withdraw a child from the portion of the school curriculum. So, and again, this one, it, there's a lot of in here that is, that is fine. And it is actually, we, we support this. Really what it comes down to is that, that last little phrase in there, which is really... the parents' right to withdraw portions of the school curriculum. What that ultimately becomes is it makes school and school curriculum à la carte. You know, you, we could have, we have 43, approximately 4,500 students, we could have 4,500 different decisions from the parents on, I want to be in this topic or that topic. We get into world history or American history, this day and not that day. So it really would open up essentially a customized curriculum for each individual student. And the reality is, the district can't do that. You know, and that's, you know, we, we serve the community, we, you know, we have a, you know, to serve the community as a whole, as an aggregate. And we work with parents, and, but the, there's a, there's a limit, practical limit to what we can do to create one-off curriculum. And, and, you know, the time, the money, the resources, the complexity. And we have, have just, so, you know, we had an issue with taking pictures of kids in elementary school when, you know, it would be a group photo, and a child would wander in whose parent did not want those, that his picture published. And that's, and how does a teacher manage that? That was difficult enough, and that's, you know, when, where we went to...
Parents' Square.
Parents' Square, to, to change the way we managed making pictures available, which, which kept it private essentially, and, and addressed it. But that's, it's very difficult to say, we're going to manage a one-off student. So that's, that's really where, where this is heading, and the...
And this was, this was not, that this is the ones not being, one of the ones that's not being recommended, correct?
This was, this was not recommended by the resolution committee, which again, is representatives from districts from all over the state.
Okay, gotcha. So remind me, because I, it's been a while since I've been at the meeting, all these will come up for vote, even ones that are not recommended. Is that correct?
The ones that are recommended are by default nominated, motioned and seconded.
Okay.
The ones that are not recommended need a motion and a second. And then they will come up for discussion. So there, that's, that's the difference between how it's managed in the meeting, the protocols of the meeting. It has to be motioned in a second. And, and frankly, most of those people will have a motion in a second. You know, that's, that's really what, that's, that's really the main difference.
Right, right, right.
And in the same time, there's a lot of discussion. I was on the resolution committee for three years.
Right.
And there's a lot of discussion that goes on those meetings, and they talk about, and sometimes they find things and they try to find ways to make the resolution better. And we've called the authors while we're in the meeting, we've called the authors, had someone go off on sidebar and say, hey, we think it would be a lot better if you said this, if you changed the wording a little bit. And a lot of times, very agreeable, they appreciate the fact that we're trying to make it better. Sometimes they're not. And, and so based on the best outcome we can come with is what we would make that, that decision on.
Right, right. All right, so the meeting is 17th, and did we ever find out if anyone else can go? Did we find that out? Okay.
Nobody else can go?
Nobody else can go? Okay. That's a bummer, because I was wondering if anyone wanted to pop on and view it. It's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting, you know, of learning opportunity, I think, to, so. All right, so we'll circle back with you if anyone has other questions for Mark or thoughts on voting. Is everyone good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot of work, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. So that is the rest of our business. I don't think we have unfinished business. Anyone? No? Any new business? All right. So may I have a motion, please, and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:27 PM?
Some more.
Second.
Motion by Catherine, second by Mark. All those in favor? All in favor, not opposed. Thank you.